Hi, welcome back to the reading two of Study Session One in Ethics. Code of Ethics and Standards of Professional Conduct. Before we move into the presentation, student candidates are advised to pause the video and go through the disclaimer. Basically, this disclaimer talks about CFA Institute, its members, its affiliates have really got nothing to do with me and the contents herein are solely my property, they do not either promote or endorse my product. Now, at the end of this review, student candidates are expected to know about the six component of Code of Ethics. They should have a desk level understanding of the seven standards of professional conduct and the ethical responsibilities encompassing the above two. Now, before I move into the next slide, let me tell you there is something called a Standards of Practice Handbook. The Standards of Practice Handbook, or Handbook in short, has been there since the inception of the CFA program itself. The Standards of Practice Handbook is being governed by the CFA Institute's governing body that overlooks the ethics and the ethical conduct around the practices of the investment management world. The inputs to such a committee is being provided by a council called as SPC. We will learn about SPC in a detailed manner in our forthcoming slides. Now, the Standards of Practice Handbook or Handbook gets updated to stay relevant and contemporary with the changing laws and changing practices across the investment management world. And that is how it stays relevant. So, in continuation of the same, let me start with the key words that are being changed. To start with first is the mission statement itself. So, the mission statement that reads in the latest of the Standards of Practice Handbook says that "The mission statement of CFA Institute is to lead the investment profession globally by promoting the highest standard of ethics, education, and professional excellence for the ultimate benefit of society." Now, education and the ultimate benefit of society are the ultimate benefit of society are the new addition to the existing statement. Okay, now coming to the code of ethics principle, it says, the old code used to read as "Promote the integrity of and uphold the rules of governing capital markets." That has been replaced by "Promote the integrity and viability of the global capital markets for the ultimate benefit of the society." So, twice it has come, first here, second here. All that it talks about is that in today's world, the investment management function is no longer confined within a particular geography, but it is all pervasive across the globe. So, investment management firms are gradually becoming globally interconnected, that's for sure. Nobody can work in isolation and second is that because of its global presence, the risk, you know, whether it increases or decreases, well, let's not get into that. But the, the understanding is that, you know, any, on all practices should ultimately benefit the society at large and not few firms only. And the next three addition talks about certain standards. To begin with Standard 4C, which talks about the responsibilities of the supervisors. The old code used to read as "Member and candidates must make a reasonable effort to detect and prevent violations of applicable laws, rules, regulations, and the code and standards by anyone subject to their supervision or authority." The new standard reads as "Members and candidates must make reasonable efforts to ensure that anyone subject to their supervision or authority complies with applicable laws, rules, regulation, and code and standards." Yes, so this has become, you know, what it has, what it has done is it has increased the supervisory requirement and the oversight requirement a little bit more. And it has become all pervasive wherein it says that, you know, well, compliance is important. And compliance with what? Compliance with the applicable rules, the regulations, and in addition to these two, the Code of Ethics as has been prescribed and laid down by the CFA Institute itself. So, the earlier towards the reasonable effort to detect and prevent that has been completely omitted. Okay, the next standard it talks about is the appropriate, the specific disclosure and appropriate transparency. Well, all that it talks about is that it is an addition to the existing standard. So, the new principle and it reads as follows. "The new principle and related guidance take into account the fact that levels of disclosure will differ between products and services. Members and candidates along with the firms must determine the specific disclosure their clients should receive while ensuring appropriate transparency of the individual firm's investment process." And the addition has been "Disclose to clients and prospective clients significant limitations and risks associated with the investment process." Yes, so before this, the standard used to read as that they should make an overall disclosure about the investment process in general about the firms. So, now, now the firm could have a trading desk, it could have an equity desk, it could, which is part of it asset management desk. You know, it could have a fixed income desk, I don't care, I don't know. And I could have a client, now the, the investment specific principles across all these three might differ. Just giving a blanket statement to a client may be insufficient. Hence, it is stipulated that that particular product or that particular trade or any particular specific information which is important and pertinent to that particular client and his situation must be disclosed along with the general overview. Last but not the least pertains to Standard 7A wherein the old standard used to read as "Conduct as member and candidates in the CFA program. Members and candidates must not engage in any conduct that compromises the reputation or integrity of CFA Institute or the CFA designation or the integrity, validity, or security of the CFA examinations." Now, since the CFA Institute is no long, is, is not only, is, is not only conducting the CFA, CFA charter program itself, but along with that it conducts CIPM course and many other courses are going to be there in the future that can be expected. So, all that it says is that whatever is applicable as part of ethics to the CFA charter program is now going to be universally applicable to the current existing program other than the CFA and all other forthcoming programs. Okay, so with that being said, the next thing we need to know is that every CFA charter holder, every member, that is, is supposed to submit and sign their annual, you know, PCP statement wherein they disclose in case they are subject to any sort of litigation, they are subject to any sort of investigation impending or otherwise, or they have been, you know, without any sort of dispute for the last, in, in the last year. So, that is an annual disclosure that comes into picture. Of course, as we know that every member and every candidate is supposed to uphold the, the principles of ethics as has been laid down by the institute and the charter holder makes an additional disclosure every time he renews his charter. So, this comes as part of the attested disclosure which also serves as a source for information gathering for that particular member. Now, why this professional conduct program comes into picture? Well, PCP comes into picture if there is a suspected violation on part of any of its member. So, the sources from where the knowledge of such violation can come into being are these five. The attested disclosure, the proclaimed offense, discovery, the watchdog model at the CFA Institute, or the proctor's report. All right, so, so we started off with the attested disclosure, which is basically nothing but the annual statement being provided by the CFA Institute member itself. In addition, in addition, while you register for the program or any of its level, you will or you might have to actually again disclose the same, submit the same disclosure that if you're in a part of any investigation, you have been subjected to any sort of sanction or is there any litigation which is pending, which is in civil, in civil or criminal in nature or any basically, you know, if, if you're found on the other side of the laws or the compliance or the regulation, you're supposed to make an honest and full disclosure to the institute. Second is the proclaimed offense wherein it is, it is, it is a national media or any sort of publication wherein or any sort of verdict that has been already passed and the CFA Institute comes to know about it. Third is the discovery, again, the discovery is through, ah, there is, so one thing which I wanted to tell is that the proclaimed offense disclosure can also be made by the member, by the covered member himself. A discovery is wherein the institute comes to know of any such malpractice or any such violate, suspected violation through the public sources, the public sources could be news media, the public source could be any of the publication report of the, by any of the regulator or, you know, stuff like that. Fourth is a watchdog, well, we know that, you know, social media of late in the last five years has become very active and investment sphere is no exception. Here also, we have an Instagram, we have a Twitter, and we have a Facebook and whatnot. So, it is quite possible in any of the chat boxes, sensitive information are being exchanged and traded. The CFA Institute has its own watchdog which is on the prawn and which actually monitors for any suspected divergence of any sensitive information pertaining to any capital market that could be adversarial to the investment community as a whole. And last but not the least, if you're found indulging in any sort of malpractices that starting with cheating, glancing, and et cetera, which the proctor makes an exceptional note of that could also be initiating and triggering a PCP inquiry against you. Well, once the institute has decided that you are subjected, you are subject to a PCP inquiry, the institute will initiate an investigation and as part of investigation, the first step is to seek a written explanation from the member against whom an allegation is pending or the institute has found certain gross wrongdoing. In addition to the written, written explanation sought from you, the CFA Institute on its own accord independently can conduct the interview of the relevant stakeholders that may include whistleblower, that may include third party, or that may include a tet, tet, tet with their regulator if that is possible. And last but not the least, having gone through the travels of the last three steps, the final conclusion can be drawn only through the evidence that is being collected. Having collected all the evidence, the CFA Institute may conclude that one of the few outcomes can actually happen. So, first is the CFA Institute may decide, well, you are actually innocent and nothing else has to be done. Nothing else has to be done about it, so your file will be closed with a small note to you that there is no further inquiry or no further explanation or no further investigation is required. Second is that the institute does believe that there has been some sort of violation. Well, depending on the severity of violation, the institute may stipulate you with a censure, a reprimand, or it might actually, you know, put you under some sort of sanction wherein you might have to pay some fine. Or the harshest or the severest punishment is actually to revoke your right to use the CFA charter in case you are a CFA charter holder or bar you completely or permanently or temporarily from the CFA Institute's program altogether for some period of time. So, please remember that these are the chronological steps that the institute will have to undertake before they can put on any sanction against you. So, I want all the student candidates to make a note of it. All right, so application of codes and standards. The members and candidates, CFA Institute encourages members and candidates to improve upon their, impress upon their respective firms to adopt the Code of Ethics and Standards of Professional Conduct. Yes, it does, so the whole idea is that since one of the mission statement of the CFA Institute is to lead the professional world of investment management, hence the expectation of its members are that not only they will be, they will be practicing, they will be ethical in their practices and they will be upholding the moral principle of ethics, but they would also be responsible for propagating the ethics and the Code of Ethics and the Standards of Practice Handbook in the sphere of the professional domain. So, which is to say that if I am a covered member, I, it is my perhaps, if not a fiduciary duty, at least, at least an expected duty out of, out of me to propagate the Code of Ethics, to encourage others to behave, behave in the ethical manner that is expected and follow the guiding principles of the Standards of Practice Handbook. Okay, secondly, it is also open to non-member as well. The non-member, all that the non-member has to do is to send a letter to the CFA Institute claiming his compliance with the Code of Codes and Standards. Of course, CFA Institute may issue a statement that, you know, he, the such and such member has actually issued, has claimed his compliance with the Codes and Standards of CFA Institute, which has not been verified. Now, in addition, I have also earmarked, there is something called as Asset Management Code of Conduct. The Asset Management Code of Conduct is not per se much, much of importance as far as your level one is concerned, well, level two, it's a different story altogether. Level three is again a different story altogether, but all they need to understand is that the Asset Management Code of Conduct is completely different than the, the, the Code of Conduct that is, that is, you know, that is, that is to be followed by the members and candidates or the voluntary member or a voluntary non-member who wishes to follow the Codes and Standards, adopt the Code of Standards, or a particular firm that has actually adopted the Codes and Standards of the Ethics and Standards of Practice Handbook. So, Asset Management Code of Conduct can only be adapted by an organization or a company. Individuals cannot claim Asset Management Code of Conduct. All right, so we were also talking about the SPC or the Standards of Practice Council, the body which actually provides its necessary inputs to the CFA Institute's governing body overseeing the Codes of Ethics. So, they do this through, through, through the, the, through the six guiding principles. First is representative of high standards of professional conduct, which is to say that the guidance as has been provided in today's world, which is latest, it is representative of the professional conduct itself. Second is that it is relevant to the changing nature of, nature of investment profession. Third is that it is globally acceptable. Fourth, sufficiently comprehensive, practical, and specific. Fifth is enforceable and sixth is testable. So, the SPC on an annual basis provide the inputs to the governing council. The governing council in turn takes the relevant decision. All right, now, why ethics is important? Well, why ethics is important is because of three important factors. First is that it is an obligation on part of anybody who is covered member. So, self accountability. Ethics as an addendum is a great tool for the organization's betterment. And third is that because compliance in itself may be insufficient. Okay, so what do we mean by that? So, as we know that, you know, you know, let's, let's put yourself into an hiring manager's position. So, if you were to hire somebody who you know, you have, let's say, you are, you have the CV in front of you, you have two candidates, both of them are equally good, one of them is a CFA charter holder, another one is not. However, you are to make a choice and while you make the choice, the only thing that is wiring down, because you have found both of them equally good, the only thing that is found, to be, to be, to be given importance to, to the CFA charter holder, not because of his knowledge alone, but because he's supposed to be an ethical person in his conduct. Or that's how the CFA Institute differentiates itself from the rest of the world. So, self accountability becomes a paramount importance, it is an obligation, mind you. And if, if you lose that, what happens? Well, it will, you lose a job, there could be a reputation issue with you, you could be subject to some sort of fines, et cetera. So, all of these things will negatively impact your career and that is why ethics is important to an individual. As far as the organization is concerned, well, organization is nothing but a collection of individuals. Now, if the, and if the organization in itself collectively is ethical in its conduct, it can expect its members, it can expect its employees to follow the suit. And as said before that, you know, ethics cannot manifest itself in isolation. It is, it, it is completely top-down driven, it is completely top-down driven. So, if the organization as a whole adopts the Codes and Practices of Ethics as has been outlined by the CFA Institute, it is expected that the propensity and the chances that the grassroots employees will also behave ethically and hold the moral, uphold the moral principles increases exponentially. Third is that compliance is insufficient. Why compliance is insufficient? Because compliance is, compliance is what? Compliance is, you know, is, is, is pertinent or is relevant to a particular organization. Rules and regulations are pertinent to a particular country. Rules and regulations are also pertinent to a particular regulator or a particular professional body. But as we are globally expanding our footprint in the investment management profession, there is a requirement of a common standard and that is where the CFA Institute excels. And that is perhaps one of the most fundamental reasons that why compliance may be insufficient. Second important reason that what I can think of is that most of the emerging market, most of the emerging market economies or the, or the, for want of better word, the, the, the third world economies may not have a fully developed compliance manual. And, you know, so, so to provide a ready reckon or guidance to, to handle these sovereigns, to handle these, the, handle the capital markets of such nations. You know, compliance may not be sufficient, but Code of Ethics as laid down by the CFA Institute may be applicable and relevant. The companies are also expected, the organizations are also expected to align their compensation structure such that the unethical behavior is not encouraged. You have to meet a sales target and this is your last quarter of the year and you actually indulge into misselling because you have a bonus which is in the site and you don't mind, you think that, you know, it's just a short term thing that you want to indulge into, well, that's not allowed. Always remember that law is setting things right, but ethics is about a moral compass. The former is perception and the latter is not only guiding principles, but they profess of what is to be upheld in the tightest of situation. All right, so that brings us to the last slide, last but one slide of this presentation. So, we have the Code of Ethics, again, I have earmarked the key words out here. So, first starting with the Code of Ethics, act with integrity, compliance, competence, diligence, and respect. And in ethical manner with the public clients, prospective clients, employers, employees, colleagues in the investment profession and other participants in the global capital market. So, that's obviously what it is. Integrity of profession place the integrity of investment profession and the interest of clients above their own personal interest. Use reasonable care and exercise independent professional judgment when conducting investment analysis, making investment recommendation, taking investment actions, and engaging in other professional activities. Practice and encourage others to practice in a professional and ethical manner that will reflect credit on themselves and the profession as a whole. Promote the integrity and viability of the global capital markets for the ultimate benefit of the society. And last but not the least, maintain and improve their professional competence and strive to maintain and improve the competence of other investment professional. So, these are the six Code of Ethics which are going to be there with you along with the seven standards from your level one to level three. I use a small mnemonics, for example, integrity, competence, diligence, and respect. These are the four key words, so I use a mnemonics called ICDR just to recall when I need to. From here now, let's boil down to the Standards of Professional Conduct. So, there are basically five standards as been raised down. Professionalism, integrity of capital markets, duties to clients, duties to employers, investment analysis, recommendations and action, conflict of interest, responsibilities as a CFA Institute member or CFA candidate. These standards in themselves have subset of standards. Now, we're going to learn all of that in details in the following chapter, in the following reading. Here, just let me touch base upon each of these standards and the subsets thereof. So, professional, let's start with professionalism first. So, professionalism in turn has four, four sub standards, which are those, first is knowledge of law. So, the first thing that it talks about is that members and candidates must be knowledgeable, must be acquainted with the laws of the land. Independence and objectivity. Independence and objectivity refers to a candidate's willpower to stay neutral, to stay true to his knowledge, true to his research, and not be biased or be influenced by any sort of peer pressure, senior's pressure or any sort of incentives, wrong kind of incentives, that is gifts or any sort of contingent benefit that may accrue by issuing a certain recommendation or, you know, engaging in some sort of activity which is contrary to what the investment mandate could be or his research may suggest. Misrepresentation. They should not knowingly make any misrepresentation relating to investment analysis, recommendations, actions, or other professional activities. So, not, not knowingly make misrepresentation. What does this mean? That, for example, you're using a quant model. Now, while using the quant model, you are aware of the limitation of that quant model. It is your perfunctory duty, it is your fiduciary duty to make a full disclosure to your client while you make use of that quant model. At least in, now, a situation may arise that the client in question may not be fully conversant with the sophistication of the mathematical model. Suffice to say, in such a situation, you should at least give an outline about the limitation of the model. If you have not done so, then you have misrepresented your investment thesis altogether. Misconduct. Members and candidates must not engage in any professional conduct involving dishonesty, fraud, and deceit or commit on any act that reflects adversely on their professional reputation, integrity, or competence. So, engaging in any sort of activity, for example, engaging in any, in sort of protest against a particular bill that has been passed in the parliament is not under the purview of misconduct. But, you know, coming to a social gathering, inaugurated, and then talking rubbish in the party, well, that is a misconduct. So, it is not only about deceit, it is not only about fraud, it is not only about dishonesty, of course, which are, you know, wrong kind of things to do, but this is also about how you conduct yourself in social gathering as well as in your professional realm. Integrity of capital markets. You're not supposed to act on any material, non-public information. For example, a pharma company is just on the verge of unleashing the next generation cancer drug. The patent has been approved by FDA and it is going to make a, it is going to make a public announcement soon. You have, you are privy to that set of information by, somehow you're privy to that set of information and you decide to, before that news become public, you decide to immediately purchase 1000,000 shares of that particular company in your account or in your client's account. Not permitted because this is a material, non-public information. Market manipulation. So, again, you know, this is rigging the market, so just about, you know, buying a particular share with the objective of somehow jacking up the share price, even though fundamentally you believe that it is not worth a dime and you're somehow trying to corner the market and automatically the market responds by, you know, shooting the price up of that particular share or particular stock. That is market manipulation, you're not allowed. Duties to client. Duties to client ranges from loyalty, prudence, and care, fair dealing, suitability, performance presentation, and preservation of confidentiality. So, your loyalty lies with your client, of course. Members and candidates have a duty of loyalty to their clients and must act with reasonable care and exercise prudent judgment. Members and candidates must act for the benefit of their clients and place their clients' interests before their employer's or their own interest. There have been cases wherein a particular member or a charter holder had to leave his organization just because he was not able to do justice to his service, to his clients. So, that is the extent to which CFA Institute actually encourages you in order to protect your integrity, in order to protect your ethos and values. Fair dealing. Members and candidates must deal fairly and objectively with all clients when providing investment analysis, making investment recommendations, taking investment action, or engaging in any other professional activities. So, the key word out here is fairly and objectively. So, what that means is, for example, you are in charge of small cap stock, you have also in charge of managing a particular client portfolio and the client is 70 years plus and you believe that, you know, the small cap stock is not suitable for him and yet, when the, when, when, when the need so arises, you actually do, actually purchase share in his account. So, has this been a fair dealing? No, this has not been a fair dealing. On the other hand, suppose you are supposed to, you know, subscribe to a particular IPO and the IPO is likely oversubscribed, so whatever amount, whatever number of shares that you receive and the I P O is likely oversubscribed. So whatever amount, whatever number of shares that you receive finally, you can, it's up to you now to how you allocate those shares in the client's account, in the client's account, you favor one particular client to another by disproportionately allocating share to that client. Not allowed. That's not fair dealing. Suitability. The suitability is very important. The first example that I gave in, in, in fair dealing, part of it is also applicable as far as suitability is concerned. Suitability means three things. First is you must understand the sophistication or the, uh, knowledge of the clients in matter of finance and investment, his previous experience before advocating or advising him on investment. Second is you must understand his current financial status and third, you must take that particular investment in the context of the portfolio, not in isolation. So these are three subsets of suitability itself which you need to remember. Performance presentation. Well, presentation, uh, you know, as it says that presentation, most of us will do with the objective of making us look very good. Can we do that? Well, you can do that, but not at the cost of not being fair, accurate or incomplete. So if any part of your presentation is hiding or concealing a fact which, uh, perhaps is your weak point or talks about your failure to deliver something and you try to somehow conceal it, hide it, that's not true representation. That's not how you should present your performance. You are supposed to talk about your limitation as well in the same context, in the same elan, with the same gusto as you are talking about your achievements, past achievements, that is. So performance presentation has to be fair, it has to be accurate and it has to be complete without the intent of misleading your prospective client. Preservation of confidentiality. Again, a very important aspect of it, your client, eh, you, you are a financial doctor of your client. So your client ma- must have reposed a lot of faith and trust in you. And you are privy to all the sensitive information of that particular client. You are not supposed to divulge that piece of information even to your colleague or to somebody in the organization who is not connected to the investment portfolio that you are working on. Okay? Not without the express con- consent of the client himself, but there is a caveat to it. If your client is somebody who is actually indulging or who has acted contrary to law or has actually indulged in any sort of illegal activities, then you are at your ethical responsibility to report that to the appropriate authorities. Or in case there is a pending investigation or is, or an ongoing investigation against your client and, uh, and it requires your participation, you are supposed to be questioned in, 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 in connection to that particular investigation by the authorities. You're supposed to comply and you're supposed to cooperate. So preservation of confidentiality, all that it means is that unnecessarily without any other intent or casually, you are not supposed to divulge any of the sensitive information, any of the investment mandate of your client whom yourselves, whom you're servicing. Okay. Next is duties to employer. As I mentioned before, that your ultimate loyalty will lie with client. Following client, the next set of precedents where your loyalty should lie is with your employer. And mind you how the standard reads. The standard says that you should in matters related to their employment, members and candidates must act for the benefit of their employer and not deprive their employer of the advantage of their skills and abilities. Divulge confidential information or otherwise cause harm, harm to their employer. So all that it means is that your loyalty to your employer is limited up to you providing your utmost skills, you providing your utmost abilities to execute a job or help your employer or your office, your organization in ways that is possible. Second, you're not supposed to talk casually about your employer or divulge certain sensitive information to outside of the firm in a social gathering, in media or among friends. If you do that, you are being disloyal. You are being in, in, you're, you're not being sincere to your employer. That's not allowed. Additional compensation arrangement, as has been mentioned before, that there will be times as an investment research analyst or, uh, investment banker or, you know, a portfolio manager wherein, you know, you will be tempted to some sort of incentive. A client competitor might offer you certain additional compensation. So such kind of additional compensation which may potentially harm your employer cannot be accepted unless there is a written permission granted by your employer. Responsibilities of supervisor, this has already been discussed. I'm not going to again in, uh, spend my time on it. Next standard is that of the investment analysis, recommendation and action. The standard reads as diligence and reasonable basis. Members and candidates must exercise diligence, independence and thoroughness in analyzing investment, making investment recommendation and taking investment action. Have a reasonable and adequate basis supported by appropriate research and investigation for any investment analysis, recommendation and action. Basically, that all that it talks about. You should be thorough with your homework and you should be, you, you know, you should be thorough with your homework and while you present your conclusion, you should have all the backups available with you, just in case they are to be pulled up to support or substantiate your action, whatever you have taken. Uh, mind you, it is not talking about the outcome of a particular decision, investment decision that you have taken. An investment decision may result into something going very right or something going very wrong. The question is not about the result. The question is that have you had exercised enough diligence? Have you had gone through enough paid work to substantiate and support your action, all the actions that you have taken? Communication with clients and prospective clients. Disclose to clients and prospective clients the basic format and general principles of investment processes that are used to analyze investments or selection of securities and construct portfolios. And members and candidates must promptly disclose any changes that might materially affect their, those processes, of course. Disclose to clients and prospective clients the significant limitations and risk associated with the investment process. I have already discussed this. Use reasonable judgment in identifying which factors are important to use those factors in communication with clients and prospective clients. Distinguish between facts and opinions in presentation of investment analysis and recommendation. Now, these are, these are very, very, uh, uh, explicitly mentioned and this is very, very important uh, for us to understand that, A, to begin with, you must have the, uh, you know, the basic format ready, which you can explain in a layman's language to, uh, uh, to your prospective client or your client in question. Second is that you must have all the resources at your disposal, just in case you need to substantiate that, which is also part of the first stand, the standard before this. Second is, uh, the, the, the third aspect is that any quant model or any particular model or any particular investment action, you know, whether it is investment proof, whether it is fail-proof, obviously it's not going to be so, there are going to be certain elements of risk. You should be able to the extent that it is quantifiable. You should be able to substantiate it to your client, uh, existing or prospective. And you, last but not the least, you should be able to distinguish between what is fact and what is opinion. What do we mean by that? Any newspaper article talking about the G D P growth rate is, is not a fact. It's, it's a collection of opinion. Whatever has happened as part of the industrial growth rate in the last quarter is fact. So if you're basing your investment recommendation based on prospective growth, that may be an opinion. If you're basing your investment recommendation based on past growth, that is a fact. So that is how you should actually distinguish between facts and opinions. And you should be pointedly clear to your clients or your prospective clients that in order to arrive at this investment decision or in order to arrive at this investment conclusion, these are the facts which have helped you and these are the prospect, these are the opinions which you have considered. Record retention. Of course, uh, C F A Institute says that, you know, you should keep all the records with you. If now, there is a caveat to this, uh, how long should you preserve this record? If the, if the organization, it's, it's completely dependent on the organization, it completely dependent on the compliance of the organization and the rules and regulations the organization is subject to. However, if there is no explicit mention of the duration of retention of those records, then the blanket suggestion accorded by the C F A Institute is that of seven years. Conflict of interest. Of course, there will be conflicts of interest that may have manifested in your actions that you have taken. In the past, there may be a potential conflict of interest which may manifest in future as you move along. All of those conflicts that the ones who have taken post facto or the ones which might take prospectively must be disclosed in, in an unambiguous term. So the clause reads as like this, members and candidates must make full and fair disclosure of all matters that would reasonably expected to impair their independence and objectivity or interfere with respective duties to their clients, prospective clients and employer. Priority of transactions. You are not supposed to front-run your client. You're not supposed to front-run your employer either. So you cannot deprive any one of them before you take the investment decision in your account. For example, again, you might have been researching or following or tracking the automobile industry and suddenly you come to know about a new technology that is going to be implemented which is going to reduce the emission and it is going to be compliant with the latest emission norms and, and effectively in a post-efficient manner. And the companies of such industry you believe will reap benefits out of it and you, you've decided that, you know, they are perfect to invest into. Well, that's, that's fine, but you cannot do it first in your account and then you take it in your client's account. No, you cannot be doing that. Okay? So priority of transactions is not allowed. You have to perhaps buy those shares in your client's account for whom it is suitable, followed by giving adequate opportunity to the ones who may consider your opinion, followed by your employer's account, in case you're managing your employer's account, then comes your precedence, then comes your chance. Okay. Referal fees, what is meant by referral fees, members and candidates must disclose to their employer, client and prospective clients as appropriate any compensation, consideration or benefit received from or paid to others for the recommendation of products or services. Of course, because this, this is something which may act against the interest of your, uh, prospective client. It may act against the interest of your employer. The, the liberty to decide to the extent or the potential extent of, of damage of such referral fees lies with the prospective client and the employer. So it is your fiduciary responsibility to make the appropriate disclosure and it is their judgment whether they believe that this referral fees was justifiably accepted or it should be returned. The last standard is that of the C F A Institute member or C F A candidate. First, it talks about conduct as a participant in C F A Institute program. Members and candidates must not engage in any conduct that compromises the reputation or integrity of C F A Institute or the C F A designation or the integrity, validity or security of the C F A Institute's program. Of course, as we said before, that we must act professionally, ethically, not only in our professional realm, but also in our personal life as well. In order to avoid any such unpleasant circumstances or situation that might question our ethical conduct. Reference to C F A Institute, the C F A designation and the C F A program. When referring to the C F A Institute, C F A Institute membership, the C F A designation or candidacy in the C F A program, the members, candidates must not misrepresent or exaggerate the meaning or implications of membership in C F A Institute, holding the C F A designation or candidacy in the C F A program. So let me just exemplify a little bit more. C F A Institute, C F A program is of course one of the, uh, you know, front-running program, one of the most cherished programs in whole of the world. Wall Street Journal has regularly voted as being one of the toughest programs to ever get around. All of this is fine, but just because you are a C F A charter holder, you have passed your level one, level two or level three program, you cannot claim superiority in your investment management decision. And hence you, you, you're supposed to market that to the prospective clients. No, it is not allowed. That's, that's a violation. Secondly, you know, you're cheating in exam or, uh, uh, you know, appearing to be cheating in, appearing to be cheating in exam. Both of them are completely disallowed. Both of them are violation. You're not, you're, you, you, you can pass on your opinion, your, you can pass on your judgment as, uh, uh, of the C F A Institute and some of the opinions, some of the judgments may not be very favorable to C F A Institute and that's absolutely fine. You are allowed to do so, but so long as you do not divulge any sensitive information of the C F A Institute, so, so long you are not found to be denigrating C F A Institute, its program or any of the members of the C F A Institute, its governing body in a light that is derogatory, in a light which is, uh, which is a demeaning, you're not supposed to do that. So that's what basically it talks about. Uh, so this is the overview of what you're going to study. This slide is, uh, extremely important because I have detailed all of it to what you are going to study in your next reading. All right. In particular, I have not included any questions in this reading because, uh, the questions to pertaining to this particular reading as there, as are there in the C F A Institute's Core Caligram book should be sufficient. So, um, this ends our chapter, this ends our reading. I hope you enjoyed this video. We'll see you soon in the next reading video. Thank you.